Good evening. I'll call tonight's meeting in order. Hold on, please.
Barkley?
Here.
Walters?
Here.
Rodney?
Here.
Ewer?
Here.
Bennish? Barton? Here. Crown?
Here.
Thompson?
Next, we have the invocation by John Meadows from Christian Chapel, Forsworth.
All right, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this season, and this is the season where we stop and reflect on you as the gift to this world. And Lord, we thank you that you came and gave your life up so we can have life and we can be in your presence. I ask that your presence be with every council member, every city official, the mayor, and all these good people, Lord, as they make the decisions and do the discussions that need to be made here. And Lord, we just ask that Hayesville become the town that you would want it to be, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next, we have a special order of business. We have employee service recognition. We have several employees that have been here for a number of years. The first one will be Chris Whorle, for five years. He's our multimedia specialist.
So Chris is originally from Pennsylvania. Chris began his career with the U.S. Navy as an aviation electronics technician. He was trained on the E-2C Hawkeye and the S-3B Viking aircraft for a total of 10 years in the military. After the service, he worked for Cessna in the experimental department. While there, he received the Techtron Innovation Award for creating a video instrumental repair system and a method for representation in aircraft owners to receive information in real time. He retired from Cessna in 2016 and started as a multimedia specialist in 2017. He designs and maintains the city webpage, broadcasts live meetings on Channel 7 and YouTube, and creates advertising graphics, also anything I ask of him, which is a lot. He designed and updated the video broadcasting system currently in use. Chris has been living in Hayesville since 2002 and has been married to Lynn for 26 years and has three children, nine granddaughters. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Next, we have Marshall Litchfield, five years, master electrician.
Good evening. Marshall Litchfield is our master electrician, and he's been recognized for five years of service. Marshall has been an integral part of the city's team since April 2nd, 2017, when he began his career as a master electrician. Marshall is responsible for maintaining the electrical systems at all city-owned facilities. He is also involved in the design and construction of new city improvements. Marshall plays a major role in keeping our parks and pathways lit, ensuring that our community is safe. I should probably correct myself. He is the role in making sure our antique lights stay lit. He has converted all of our antique lights to LED, from changing office light bulbs to repairing a cabinet door at the senior center. Marshall always takes pride in every task he is assigned. He is the unsung hero behind the scenes at many festivals and events that take place in Hayesville, providing power to bands, food vendors, and the ball fields. During his time, Marshall has completed a number of large projects, including the Veterans Memorial, Angel Hope Memorial, sand volleyball and pickleball court lights, antique lights on North Meridian, and the dog park lights. Marshall is dedicated to his job and is always willing to put in the extra effort to get things done right. And for that, we thank you, Marshall, for all you do for this community.
Thank you, Marshall. Next, we have Sam Arnold, 10 years, director of information services.
Sam started working for the city of Hayesville in May of 2012. I believe he was in the city clerk department to start with. He became assistant administrator in 2014 and the director of information services in 2021. He was raised in the Hayesville area, and in 2011, married his wife Amy and purchased their childhood, his childhood, home. Together, they have three children who attend St. Cecilia School in Hayesville. He always has an interest in computers and enjoys the challenge of solving technical issues. He is proud to work for such a quality community and is eager to see what the future of Hayesville looks like. It isn't on here, but he's the one that basically keeps our computers working and all the IT stuff and everything throughout the city. So Sam does a lot. He's kind of bashful about what all he does, but he is a great employee and a welcome to have him.
Thank you, Sam. Next, Ginny Song, 20 years, assistant recreation director.
Hi, everybody. I'm all up and out of one hug.
Ginny Song is currently the assistant recreation director with the recreation department and has been employed with the city since December 2nd of 2002. Ginny was originally hired for the position of program coordinator. In January of 2005, she was promoted to program supervisor, and then in February of 2008, promoted to assistant director. She's been instrumental in creating youth league schedules for softball, baseball, and basketball programs. She helps incorporate new programs and assist other coworkers with their events when necessary. A significant amount of Ginny's responsibilities comes with assisting the after-school program supervisor with the entering of Lasky files, recording Lasky payments, and managing online payments for Lasky. Away from work, Ginny enjoys going on the real adventure, vacations, spending time with her family, especially her nieces and nephews. Thank you, Ginny. You were looking all right. Good job.
Thank you, guys. It's a great place to work.
Thank you, Ginny. I think those did. All right, next, we have Keith Longo, 25 years, captain.
I don't know if I can beat that.
Yeah, we're not gonna be able to top that one, so I don't know where you even had to go. Okay, we've got Keith Longo. He's the captain. He's been recognized for 25 years of service. He began his career in law enforcement in 1994. He attended and completed police academies in both Kansas and Missouri. He began working for the Hayesville Police Department in 1997. During his time with the Hayesville Police Department, he served the community with a variety of positions, including both in patrol and investigations. He was also a task force officer and also has served as a supervisor. He was promoted to the rank of captain in 2021. He's married to his wife Tina, and they have two daughters, and we appreciate his service very much. Can you give a speech if you think you can talk?
I don't know if I can do that, but thank you very much. This has been my home for 25 years, and I love you.
This does something for the city for all these longevity awards they give out. So it's a, City of Hayesville is a great place to work. So next, we have the presentation and approval of minutes, eight minutes of November 14th, 2022. Councilman Crowe?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from November 14th, 2022.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
I'm staying.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer? Upset. Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, item one, citizens to be heard. We have Michael Sandin, American Legion Family Post 408.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to turn the speaker over to our post commander, Steve Tackett, and the rest of our crew. So.
Mr. Mayor, council members. We're a dual-city post, American Legion post, and we're trying to make our presence in Hayesville known. We've got a lot of members that live here in Hayesville. I lived here for, since '93 through two, just last year. We certainly appreciate your efforts over the last summer. You gave us a night over at the pool. We made that available to all of the citizens of Hayesville in charge. We served hamburgers and hot dogs, and we made a pretty nice chunk of money to go towards our things that we work on and do for the community. And on that note, we want to present you with this certificate of appreciation. It reads as follows. This certificate of appreciation is presented to the city of Hayesville for your generous contribution and support of the veterans, community, and youth programs of the American Legion Family Post 408 Derby, Hayesville. Thank you. On behalf of the American Legion Family Post 408 Derby, Hayesville, Kansas, thank you for your generosity and support. We like, we really like coming over here. We want to make our presence a lot better known. We like working with your community, and by the way, the mayor here is a member of our SAL. Legion. Oh, he's a Legion member. I'm sorry.
And writer.
And a writer. That's why I got confused with the writer. And we need to see you in a few more meetings. I know you're really busy, but we'd like to present you with this. Can you see us all? Working on it there?
Yes, I can see you.
Terry, scoot in. Oh, now you're going. All right, everybody smile. I should be good. I took sorry. Thank you.
Everything you guys do for our community and just for veterans in general, so we appreciate it. Thanks for everybody coming down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully, you can get another night at the pool this year.
Yeah, we have some great veterans organizations that support our city. All right, next, item two, approval of licenses and bonds. We have none. Item three, introduction of ordinances and resolutions. A, we have ordinance adopting the qualification of ordinances. The city of Hayesville, Kansas, providing for the repeal of certain other ordinances not included therein, accepting certain ordinances. For appeal and saving certain accrued rights and liabilities. Councilperson, pardon.
If there's any discussion, I make a motion. We approve that.
Second.
Do we motion the second? Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have an ordinance amending the updating of the comprehensive plan of the city of Hayesville, Kansas, and repealing conflicting previously adopted sections of the comprehensive plan of the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Number eight, the planning commission held a public hearing for the update of the, to the comprehensive plan. You have in your packet a red line and a clean version of changes that were proposed. No changes were made to the comp plan since 2016. Most of the changes we did this year were updates to the population numbers, studies that have been done, D-21 plans, master plans for the water and wastewater department. Added the Hayesville Hustle program, the new hack, bike path, updated those numbers for paths that have been added. We are looking at doing a more extensive update to this in the next year. So this is before you for your consideration. Also, the ordinance was left out from the packet, so it is at your bench that would need to be approved for this. We stand for any questions.
Does the council have any questions? Councilperson, pardon.
I, if there's no discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the ordinance amending and updating comprehensive plan of the city of Wichita, or city of Hayesville, Kansas, and repealing conflicting previously adopted sections of the comprehensive plan of the city of Hayesville. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance amending the comprehensive plan. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer? Yes. Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have an ordinance. This deals with the Black Hills Energy and its franchise agreement. We have Will to answer any questions. If you have anything in particular, we also have James Williams and Shane Cornelius from Black Hills here as well. Councilman Crowe?
I was just gonna thank Will. I just sent a question to him, but I was just, you were talking about the areas that KCC breaks up, and as we grow to the southwest, we're gonna probably be involved with Black Hills a little bit more, but they're already involved in some of our stuff.
Right. There are about six or seven accounts, four or five customers that are already within the city limits. But probably, if I went back and looked, probably we're not in the city limits, and they are now. So we found out about, found out about those when we were working with Black Hills as a potential service provider for the mutant village mission.
Are there any, gentlemen, are there any other communities right here, like if we're talking about southwest? Do you guys like supply, like clear water or anything like that?
We do not. We actually have, the line that runs up through your community is actually a transmission line that starts at the Oklahoma border and comes all the way up, and it serves into our infrastructure inside of the city limits of Wichita. And then south of Wichita, we serve packages, your neighbors to the south, but it is probably the next closest community to you guys coming south, so.
Okay.
And then we're, obviously, there's several other communities around, but that's the closest one as far as the geographic is concerned.
And South Wichita as well. Thank you.
Councilman Crowe?
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion. We approve an ordinance granting Black Hills, Kansas, Gas Utility Company, LLC, Black Hills Energy and its successors, and a sign of natural gas franchise agreement as presented.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the Black Hills Energy franchise agreement. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barton?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have resolution. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, we have a resolution that the community of Hayesville urges its citizens to join this effort and hereby declares the city to be an official entrant into the Pride Program for the year 2023. Councilperson, pardon.
I make a motion. We approve the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the community of Hayesville to be an entrant into the Pride Program for 2023. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
All right, next, we have E, resolution defining the city limit and boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Councilman Crowe?
I've got a couple of questions on this. First off, is this resolution just something for us to do, to do legalities, to make sure we've got our boundaries correct?
Yeah, we're supposed to, anytime we annex property within a year, we're supposed to revise or update the boundary resolution and have it approved by any year.
So this resolution knows all the boundaries, right?
Yes.
So is each one of these tracks, like a main track, and then maybe island annexations?
So basically, PEC puts it together for us, because none of us could probably write this description, but they look at the way that it makes the most sense writing it, and they, like, you can see in there, when you look at it, they took out one of the tracks.
I saw, yeah.
Because now it's easier to write it with the new stuff that we have in there, so there's not that extra track there, but yeah.
Okay, so PEC writes it. Do we still check it out?
They, they write it. I don't think Josh reviews it for the details.
I'm not a surveyor, so.
Have to depend on them.
It's great, Dan.
Yes. Well, yeah, that's what I kind of started reading. I was like, this is stupid. That's why I didn't know if it was island annexations broken up in there or what.
Pictures in here.
Does that mean you don't want to read the whole thing?
That means that I couldn't read the whole thing, I don't think. I'd have.
Enough letters and numbers and words.
Well, that's all I, there's no other. Are you gonna make a question? Ask a question?
Yes. Yeah, don't start yet.
So, we have, Councilman Walters, person.
Yeah, I was just wondering about the map, the red section in the south central. Somebody could explain that. I would not familiar with that.
The red section there is the property right next to Public Works that we, that we purchased this year. It was the one that went up for auction, sealed bid auction, that we approved, spending up to $30,000 and purchased that.
Why is it red?
It's red because it's an addition. It's one of the two properties that was.
Oh, these are additions. I thought that was outside our, okay, got it, got it. Sorry, not with you.
Question answered.
No, I'm gonna answer your question. What would a council like to do with this?
Wait, Steve. I make a motion that we approve the resolution defining the city limits of the boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution defining the city limits and boundaries of the city of Hayesville, Kansas. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, next, we have notices and communication. A, governing body announcements. Councilman Crowe?
Things going on at the library. Tomorrow at 6:00 PM, there will be a, County Commissioner Lopez is having a citizen advisory group on the 15th. At 10:00 AM will be the parents' teacher story time at 10:00, and then at 11:00, the parents' teacher's toddler time. And then on December 21st, 4 o'clock is the next Lego club meeting. On December 22nd is the Christmas open house at the library, and that goes from 10:00 to 2:00. Then the library will be closed from the 23rd to the 25th. On the 29th is the next Friends of the Library Board meeting. And a reminder that the quilters, the quilters meet in the community room on Monday afternoons, and the knitting and crochet group meets Tuesday afternoons. That's what's going on at the library.
Thank you. Are there any further announcements? All right, announcements for the senior center, upcoming events. Android 101 class is Tuesday, December 13th at 2:00 PM. Christmas paint party, that's this Saturday, December 17th at 10:00 AM. The Hayesville shopping trip, Wednesday, December 21st at 2:00 PM. And the senior center and Hayesville Hustle is gonna be, they're gonna be closed on the 23rd, 26th, and January 2nd. Recurring programs at the senior center, Domino's, Donuts, coffee, conversation, billards, bingo, steps, cards, drumming, tai chi, and crafting club. Some of the Hayesville numbers for November of this year, one-way riders, 254, and four new registered riders. All right, next, we have, Councilman Crowe?
I was just curious, with our last meeting that we're gonna have at the end of the year, just out of curiosity, since we added Rock Road on the Hayesville Hustle thing, I was curious how many trips maybe we've taken to Rock Road?
I know we have three people scheduled for dialysis now to get to their, I would, I know that was right away. Once we did that, I'll have to check on the additional numbers for it, but I know we did have three reoccurring appointments for dialysis.
Okay.
I'll check.
Thanks.
All right, next, B, Sedgwick County Fire Department, Station 34, monthly report. It's in your packet. We have a memo for new businesses. There are two of them. The Shining Light Learning Academy and reincarnate hair, hair salon. All right, next, we have a memo about best value services and email from Causus Communications. Next, item five, old business. We have none. Item six, other business. A, consideration of bids for copper tail infrastructure.
Good evening. The bid letting for the infrastructure improvements for the copper tail addition was held on December 6. The project includes improvements for water, sanitary seer, stormwater, paving, and site grading. We are requesting authorization to contract with Donlenger and Sons Construction Company for the base bid and option two for a total of $1,141,992.75. Option two is additional site grading to bring the individual lots up in elevation to make them build ready. Stand for any questions you may have.
Councilman Crowe?
After my question, I'll make a motion that we approve the bid from Donlenger for $1,141,992.75 for the copper tail improvements, infrastructure improvements as presented.
Second.
So we have motion and a second to approve the bid as presented. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barton?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer? Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have item B, public hearing for the consideration of approval of the proposed amendment to the 2022 budget. I have a public hearing script I'll be reading. Okay, we are now formally opened, or we now formally open the public hearing on proposed 2022 budget amendment. Do any members of the audience wish to speak concerning the proposed budget amendment?
Do we have to open it first?
No, we don't.
Okay.
If there are no members of the audience wishing to speak concerning budget or amendment, budget amendments, I now formally close the public hearing for the proposed 2022 budget amendment. Is there any council discussion on the budget amendment? Councilman Barton?
You have to put it in layman's terms for me. What are we, what are we about to vote on?
To budget amendment because of the recreation pool. Blue pool, or Rob, you wanna explain it?
Yeah, so. We had our budget set for what were our expenditures for the pool season, and due to increased costs with staffing and inflation on products and stuff, we exceeded what we said we were gonna spend. I remember that, okay. Cool, thank you.
But I would entertain a motion on approved, or on the proposed 2022 budget.
Could we close the public hearing? Vote to close the.
We didn't vote to open it.
We did. We did not vote to open it. I'm sorry. It's already closed. All right, I would entertain a motion on proposed 2022 budget amendment. Councilperson, pardon.
Make a motion. We approve the 2022 budget amendment.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer? Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have item C, consideration of agreement with Sedgwick County Senior Center funding. Georgie?
This is our annual agreement with Sedgwick County for the senior center levy. Differences from the 2022 agreement are they have replaced the word "level 2" with "senior center" throughout the contract. The objectives for the baseline, special events, and education are all the same. Funding was increased by $10,240. Funding for 2022 was $37,500. Funding for 2023 is $47,740. This has been reviewed by city staff and the city attorney, so I can answer any questions you might have.
Councilman Crowe?
I make a motion that we approve the agreement with Sedgwick County regarding the senior center funding.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the agreement with Sedgwick County regarding the senior center funding. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barton?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Ewer?
Yes.
Barton?
Yes.
Crown?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
All right, next, we have D, consideration of bucket truck.
So we obtained a quote that you purchase a truck with an insulated bucket lift. The lift will be able to reach heights of 45 feet. This vehicle replaced a 1995 utility truck with 130,000 miles plus. We purchased that vehicle from a local salvage yard at the time. The new truck will be utilized by our master electrician to maintain traffic signals, antique lights, and other overhead work. We have looked extensively the last year for a bucket truck that met our needs, and until now, we were able to find one. We are requesting your authorization to purchase the 2022 Dodge Ram with 45-foot bucket lift from Specialty Fleet Sales LLC in the amount of $150,032.50. This is a 2022 budgeted item at $125,000. The excess will come from equipment reserve. I stand for any questions.
Councilman Barton?
Hey, did you guys purchase any extra warranty on it or anything?
It has just the standard Dodge warranty, which I think is 10 years, 100,000 miles, I believe.
Okay. That's all.
What would the council like to do? Councilperson, pardon?
I make a motion. We approve the purchase of the 2022 Dodge Ram with the bucket lift for $150,032.50.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve our bucket truck purchase. Is there any discussion? Question, please.
Barkley?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crown.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
All right, next, we have E, consideration of community fisheries assistance program agreement.
So before you tonight is the contract renewal with Kansas Department of Wildlife and Parks for the Community Fisheries Assistance Program. This program applies to the stocking of lakes in Dorner Lake. The contract has the same language as previous contracts, and the term is for five years. Uh, Josh has reviewed the contract, and I stand for any questions you may have on it.
Counsel McCrom.
We thought about trying to bring any of our other city ponds or lakes into this agreement to try to get them stocked as well.
We have in the past, and, uh, at times dropped that program because homeowners in the neighborhood didn't like their kind of neighborhood pond being advertised in the public, if that makes sense.
Yeah, because if, they, they.
Okay, I was just curious.
Counsel McCrom.
I make a motion that we approve the, uh, Community Fisheries Assistance Program Agreement as presented.
Second.
We have motion and a second, Counsel, uh, Walters.
Just a quick clarification, you said you, that the neighborhoods don't like it, you add them advertising that, does that mean you're still stocking them, or just don't stock them now?
Right, so if, if they're not on the CFAP program, which we're talking about tonight, we don't stock them. Um, if it's CFAP, then Kansas Department of Wildlife.
Any further discussion? Question, please.
Barkley.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Ewer.
Yes.
Barton.
Yes.
Crown.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Next, item seven, department reports, A, administrative services, Georgie.
Just want to remind everyone, there's still time to enter the holiday light contest. Entries are due by Wednesday, December sixteenth, you can enter online. Um, if you have any questions, you can call Danielle at five two nine, five nine oh nine, that's all.
Thank you. Next, we have city clerk.
I have a question first, you said Wednesday, December sixteenth, that's Friday.
It's the sixteenth.
I know, but she said Wednesday.
Friday, December sixteenth.
Okay. I'll start with the utility billing software update, you have received some emails, notifications, but we are converting to our new utility billing software, and we hope to have that in place January one. With that, you will have new invoices that will be letter size, you're gonna be getting them in an envelope. Also, the website will be redesigned, um, actually, it'll be a new online portal. Because of that, we had to turn off our current portal starting today, so that will not be available until January one, when the new bills go out. With that bill, you will receive instructions on how to set up the new account, that you can start paying that way. Both of these, all of these changes actually were meant to be more user-friendly, um, ability for people to pay online using their phones, which is something we've had a problem with in the past. So we're hoping with this whole new conversion, it'll be more user-friendly for everyone involved. Also, city offices will be closed December twenty-third and twenty-sixth for the holiday, please call five two nine, five nine one two if there are any emergencies. And I just wanted to remind you that the last city council meeting will be on Thursday, December twenty-ninth at seven o'clock.
Thank you. Next, we have police.
Hi, good evening, mayor and council, um, just had a couple of things tonight. Um, our visiting officer tonight is Captain Luongo, um, we just saw him just a little bit ago, so say hi to him as you go by out there, um, he helps me out immensely every day, so. Also, we have a, Sedgwick County Emergency Management is going to, um, have a CERT class, which is a Community Emergency Response Team class. It's a basic training weekend, it's coming up, January twenty-seventh through twenty-ninth, um, it'll be at the police department right next door. Goes over a lot of different things, um, just to try to get people to, uh, volunteer to help the community and, and be there in case there's, there's ever some need that we need to do that. It's a good program, um, it includes topics on disaster preparedness, uh, fire safety utility controls, um, basic, uh, medical operations, terrorism and, and community responses, search and rescue, disaster psychology, things like that, so, um, it's a good class, anybody's able to sign up for it, so, um, there are, um, some, there's some information out there, and we also have, um, flyers that look like this around the city, they have Q R codes on them, or also a website there that you can go to to register for that class. Also, we have started distributing our twenty twenty-three calendars, so there's some back here on the back table, if you want one, you can grab one coming out, um, any resident that would like one is welcome to come by and get one at the police department, just come by and let them know you're, there to get a calendar. And finally, um, with the holidays coming up, just want to remind everybody, don't drink and drive over the holidays, always designate a driver. If you have to question and think, oh, I'm okay to drive, probably not, you can get somebody else to do it for you, don't, don't take that risk, you're risking yourself and other people too, so, thank you.
And, uh, two, uh, I was supposed to say, congratulations on, uh, uh, becoming an honorary commander at the airport space.
Oh, thank you.
Believe you're the honorary commander for the twenty-second mission support group?
Mission support group, right.
Uh, we'd like to tell us what, you know, what that means as far as honorary commander.
Uh, basically, the honorary commander program at McConnell, um, they pick, uh, community leaders around the, throughout the community, um, and, and all the surrounding areas around Wichita, and basically just try to, um, bridge the gap between, between the, uh, communities and the military, um, a lot of people just drive by the base out there, they see it and they know, they fly planes out of there, because we all seem to fly them by and things like that, but, um, they try to get us involved as, uh, community members to figure out what actually goes on and, and kind of see what goes on in the background, um, in particular, the mission support group is, is, uh, has a lot of the behind the scenes things, like, uh, your civil engineers and your police department, fire department, like that, um, E O D, things, things like that, so it'll be a good experience, but, uh, it gets us out there, and, and we get to see things at McConnell, also, we bring them off the base and, and come out here, and, uh, they're welcome to come out here and see how things work in our community and, and in the civilian world, so, that's basically it.
Thank you, I think it's, uh, great to have, uh, um, really, uh, be, be with, uh, the airport space as far as, uh, partnership, um, a lot of you probably don't know that, uh, but the wing commander, Colonel, uh, Global, um, he was at the lighting ceremony, wasn't in uniform, but he was out there, so, uh, they show support from the city and we show, uh, show our support from the airport space.
And we do have a lot of members in our community that are, are, uh, military members in one capacity or another, so, it's always good to have, have that bridge there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have public works, Georgie.
Uh, just have a couple of project updates for you, uh, the wire Hungerford Water Main project, uh, the water main and appropriate testing have been completed on the wire water main side, uh, they are working on installing the new service lines to the new water main. Um, our, uh, new radio or wa, water meter project, as of today, there's sixteen hundred meters installed, that leaves about just over three thousand, and also, uh, Evergy's subcontractor has begun trenching on the streetlights over in an industrial park, uh, after that, Evergy will come in and pull wire and put up streetlights, so hopefully that'll be complete soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have recreation, Rob.
Good evening, mayor and council, the Hayesville Activity Center will be closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, the Christmas holiday, and on January first, and we are now taking registrations for the Real Dill Showdown Pickleball and Cornhole Tournament on January twenty-eighth. Cue.
Play on, play onwards. All right, next, we have item eight, appointments, we have none. Item nine, off agenda citizens to be heard, some presenting citizens that would like to be heard. You're welcome to come up to the podium, state your name, and, uh.
Hi, I'm Matt Hill, um, I just purchased main street liquor down the street, uh, about six weeks ago, and you guys invited me, well, I think it's honorary thing when you get your license to come down and talk to the city council, so I missed the last meeting. Um, I do have plans for the store as far as dressing it up, making it a little nicer, uh, I did speak with, kind of.
You're there.
Captain?
Yep.
Okay, Lagano, the Italian guy, uh, so I am giving first responders and veterans and, or veterans and military discounts, uh, I don't think that was, that was not in the past. I do have plans on doing like a mural on the south side of the building that faces the parking lot for the grocery store, and comes seeing the, uh, Hayesville banner, and, you know, we need to talk, I need to talk to somebody about that as far as signage and all that goes. Um, but I would like to ask that, uh, you consider maybe changing the hours of operations for Sunday? The parking lot, I've only been there for six weeks, and I'm there every, every day, um, but my parking lot isn't dated with people, uh, starting at eleven o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, but especially around eleven o'clock, people looking to buy cigarettes and lottery tickets and stuff like that, um, and then during football season, I've been told it just gets cra, and it does, it gets crazy at noon, I mean, as soon as we open our doors at noon, we got guys wanting to buy a beer for the, you know, for the game and whatnot, so, I'm not looking to expand the hours, if we could just shift them from noon, or from noon to seven, maybe, or from noon to eight to like eleven to seven, uh, that would just maybe give everybody in the community a little wiggle room. I do see prob, I would say probably about fifty percent of our sales in the morning on Sundays, probably lottery tickets and cigarettes. Um, I'm not a big proponent on drinking, or, I, I know that sounds odd, I don't drink much, uh, my father is a recovering alcoholic for the last forty years, so, um, I do not drink and drive, I haven't drank since June, actually, um, but that's pretty much it. And then I would like to see about, uh, I am in a personal dessert, business edition, I'm gonna start closing at ten o'clock on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, so I am gonna change the signage on the doors as far as that goes, so that's why I actually called Russ this morning and said, hey, could you squeeze me in? Um, maybe I could do that signage if it gets approved, so, but that's about it, what, and welcome to, or, thank you for welcoming the community and all you first responders get discounts and stuff, so, anyways, thanks, guys.
Thank you. Well, what would that take to, uh, to change hours?
Josh reviewed that this morning, he can give an update. So we need to do an ordinance, and we've decided to change the hours right now, they can't open until noon, um, we can open at nine o'clock, or ten or eleven, I mean, if you guys wanted to change it, just have to close at eight, we'd have to pass an ordinance, have published notice in the paper for two weeks, and then if the citizens disagree, there could be a protest petition. If five percent of the folks that voted in the last presidential election, that's kind of crazy, but that's how the numbers work in the, uh, in the statute, um, could contest if we changed, um, from twelve o'clock to an earlier time, so, but that's what, we just have to pass an ordinance.
Counsel McCrom.
So if we change the time from, let's say, ten, we could make the time from ten to eight, and then each individual place that sold alcohol could decide when they wanted to do it in that timeframe, so if he only wanted to do it from eleven to seven, he could do that.
Yes.
Okay.
Counsel Person, pardon.
But state statute says they can do it from nine to eight, is that what you were saying?
So last year, the state changed, uh, the rules for Sunday and said that they could open before noon if the city passes an ordinance that says that they can, so right now, our ordinance says they can't open until noon, uh, the state says we can expand those hours from nine o'clock in the morning if we'd like, we allow it till eight right now, so, you know, I think the real choice is, do we want to expand it in the morning or not, so.
Okay.
Council like to discuss this further, Counselman Walters.
Yeah, a question, how many places in Hayesville actually sell liquor, uh, how many people with that involved, uh?
Pressure store.
Gas station.
How much?
Mini stop.
I'm trying.
Could be gas station, any, any place that would, you know, would, I mean, I think if we change it, it would be both for, you know, malt beverages and liquor, but you can decide which ones you want to do, so it would be liquor stores and any place that sells beer, you know, some gas station, some things like that, so.
Too close to school.
Counsel McCrom.
You know, what kind of discussion we'd need on it, I guess I'd be interested to maybe see an ordinance come to us and maybe look at it, I really wouldn't feel comfortable going before ten, but I, I can definitely see the need for it because if somebody wanted to go buy something for a noon football game, it would make sense to give a little bit of wiggle room there, and I, I wouldn't have a problem with expanding it to ten, I don't know what everybody else would think about, but still leave it, like I said, at eight, that way people can use wiggle room in there.
No reason not to go nine to eight, I mean, everybody's got their own wiggle room and time they can set to sell it.
I don't want to expand my payroll.
Well, I understand that.
You could still have, you could still choose.